All right, I'm going to call the regular City of Prescott Council meeting to order. It is Monday, September 12th at 6:00. I'll do roll call. Bailey's excused. Maureen?
Here.
Kat?
Here.
Darb?
Here.
John?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Okay, would we, everybody please stand. I'm excited for the debate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda is public comments. The City Council will receive public comments on any issues related to the agenda. And a discussion by the council may take place. But do you have anything that they'd like to bring up?
Will there be further opportunity for that after?
If it's on the agenda, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Tourism committee meetings, August 17th. Library board meetings, August 22nd. Public works committee meeting minutes, August 22nd. Regular city council meeting, August 22nd. Tourism committee meeting, August 29th. August 22nd cash balances cover sheet, general fund graphs. August 22nd general fund balance comparison. August 22 paid invoice report. Would anybody like to bring out anything on the consent agenda? Auto entertain, a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda, 1 through 9 items.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
It's really good to see the Tourism Committee, they have a really lot of good ideas already, so I'm impressed.
They've got some very good detailed notes.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Next item on the agenda is we're going to open a public hearing. The public hearing is for the CDBG Citizen Participation Hearing for the Food Pantry. Need a motion to go and open the public hearing?
I'll motion, I make a motion to go into public hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we have a public hearing?
So I'm Renee from Cedar Corp., and I administer the CDBG program on your behalf. So this public hearing is to give an update on the public facility project that the City of Prescott received an award of $944,600 from the Community Development Block Grant Program in late March of 2021. In April 2022, the city requested an additional $494,100 due to bids coming in higher than expected. The city received a signed contract amendment from DOA in June of 2022. Unfortunately, the bids had expired to the project, so the project was rebid with bid opening on July 14th, 2022. Bids came in higher than expected again, so the city requested additional $200,000, increasing the award amount to $1,638,700. The state did verbally commit to that, however, there is no signed contract at this time, as those additional funds will be coming from other CDBG COVID recipients who are returning their funds, so there's quite a bit of paperwork. The construction consists of acquisition of food pantry, food pantry remodel and expansion, construction of senior citizen meal prep kitchen, and designated COVID testing and vaccination location. Currently, the project is not started. Contractor bid is to be awarded, hopefully tonight at the meeting. Building acquisition took place in June of 2021. Construction's anticipated, if it's awarded tonight, to start in October 2022. And then, project completion is anticipated for spring of 2023. In accordance with the CDBG program, all construction is to be completed no later than March 31st, 2023. However, due to lead time with kitchen equipment and such, we may have to extend that timeline, which is perfectly fine. As the project moves along, reimbursement requests have been submitted on a regular basis. So far, the city has received $430,998 of that $1,638,700. At this time, or no, once the project has been completed, the final disbursement request and project completion will need to be submitted to the state. And right now, that is a deadline of May 31st, 2023. However, if construction activities go longer, that will also get extended as well. Once the project completion paperwork's been submitted, the city will get a letter from the state stating that the project is completed. Any questions?
Can you see, you want to comment on, we plan on moving forward with the project even though it's not signed, even though the state has said, "We're good with that."
Yeah.
And if we don't do that, then we're going to be playing this game again.
Back and forth.
That the bid will expire, you know, and so then that's why we want to move forward with the project. The state has verbally committed to the funds. And worst case scenario, if that didn't go through, we'd have to come up with $200,000.
Correct.
So just so everybody knows, that's why we want to move forward with it, so we don't keep playing this bid, ask for more money, because, you know, sooner or later, that's going to end. So.
Question?
Jeff, go ahead.
Best case scenario, we're not having to come up with the 200 grand. The grant money or for this will take care of everything and have this project done as far as for what we're talking about here right now, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay, okay. And to get to the worst case scenario, what little dominos are we looking to have to come into play for that as far as we know? To your best guess.
So my best guess is the money's there, it's just, they have to do paperwork.
For some reason, the state would not fulfill everything they said they would do.
Yep, so then, yeah. And your contract with the contractor will be contingent of the additional money, so at that point.
I think it mentioned there might be some cutbacks related to equipment and supplies that come in at the last moment.
As far as, yeah, I'm aware, I think you can play with that money as well, if you need to.
Equipment-wise, what are we doing for, I'm sure that these have to go out to bid with the process, what are?
They actually, we did receive bids.
So you got all your equipment bids?
Correct.
Please, otherwise, everybody can't hear you.
Yeah, yeah, bids were received, I think that was like mid-July. And we've actually talked with the, and just to take another step back, and we, in 2022, we've seen, these estimates were probably done in late '21, just tremendous pricing increases of mechanical, anything in the construction industry, we've seen parts and materials up 30%, you know, and that's what led us to where we are.
Lead times are way out.
Yeah, so it has been rebid, DOA required, it was only opened, we followed their rebidding process, it was only open to the original bidders, but we had to publicly bid that again. And we did still get two very competitive bids, I can go over that and then agenda item later. But, yeah, the.
And those folks understand those bids, they're comfortable locking those in.
Correct.
For the amount of time that's going to take for this to happen.
Yep, and we even revisited this with them, because we said, well, we're getting near the end of that bid timeline with which the bid is good. So they said they were still fine with that, and so it's very, you know, and the mayor had kind of mapped out kind of what would be the worst case scenario, I think that you had asked about, worst case probably would be if the state somehow didn't come up with that funds, it would probably be, as the mayor had said, $200,000 potentially that we'd have to still come up with, so we're hoping that's not the case.
Thank you. Yes, go.
Yeah, I was contacted by Carmen Drake, who is here tonight, and she had some questions that I didn't feel that I could answer, but I know that, I was glad to see Pete here, because they have to relate to the programming aspects of what's going to go on there. So I wonder, Carmen, if you're comfortable, is this the time for public comment?
Sure.
Otherwise, Carmen, I can relate what you talked to me about.
Maybe better coming from me?
Yeah.
My name is Carmen Drake, a 50-plus-year resident of Prescott. My family, my sons graduated from Prescott High. I want to know that, want you to know that I support the Food Pantry, but an article in the local paper a year ago had some wrong facts in it. It said that there was no, because the Senior Center, which is now operating out of the intermediate school, has never provided a meal program. The paper said, "We did," and that we had closed it. So there was no longer a meal program for the citizens of Prescott. The error there was that we did not sponsor one, but Pierce County sponsors one at the Water Tower Manor program. So there is an ongoing food program there for the citizens of Prescott, and I've gone there myself. It's a wonderful place to gather, it's a wonderful place for socialization, and it's a good meal program, depending on how you like your food, I guess. But, another error that was in there was the strive to put in a acceptable kitchen to staff it up there at the Food Pantry, to also provide a site for testing, which is being done at the senior high school, the new school. I can go there and get tested. I feel, and this is just from my perspective and others that I've had discussions with, is that the grant that was written was, what's the right word, it was kind of emphasized on the need for the community, just to get to the funds, and that's how grants are written sometimes, they're emphasized. I even don't like the location of it. Right now, I see the possibility of that area there being, and this is, I know what product's going forward, but I'm going to present my thoughts on it, is that with Philander's there being a wonderful, out-of-state place for many people to come and eat there, as well as the locals, with the motel having just been recently sold and going to be revamped, where in past years, I've had to send all family reunion visitors and stuff to other communities, I feel that that could be more of a destination site, and now you've got the Food Pantry in there. And I don't think that's meldable to the other area businesses that are there. So I just want to say that I'm disappointed in the presentation of a year ago, the lack of information that was coming from the community even, because when I would talk to city officials, they knew nothing about our Senior Center. I know Maureen has visited us there, but even some of your city officials had the wrong idea of what we were all about there, the Senior Center. We've had to explain that to them, of what our purpose is there. So I just feel that from the onset, until that article came out in the paper, and I got a clarification of what was going on behind the scenes, and the misinformation that was being put out there, I'm disappointed. I'm just really disappointed in the location and the extension and expansion of the Food Pantry. That's my take on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does, Pete, do you want to talk a little bit more about?
Sure, I'd love to.
Okay. I just think this is a good place to get this cleared up, because I didn't know enough about what Pete was planning.
Hi, Pete French, I'm the director of the Food Pantry. First of all, I'd like to say that the information a year ago in the newspaper was, in fact, a little bit in error. And I'm saying a little bit, because we were in negotiations with the ADRC for possible contract in the future. Misinterpreted by the editor or whoever was the representative of the paper. This is not misinformation on the city's part or the Food Pantry's part, it was the interpretation by the paper. Second of all, that property down there, we've been working on it for two years, the meal site there is originally for our shut-in clientele, that we would be able to prepare food for them and deliver it. Somewhere and somehow, the Senior Center came into the mix, and somebody came down and said, "The school is closed. Where are our tables? Where are our chairs?" I have no idea, I have nothing to do with that. You know, and they just kind of inserted themselves into the mix here, as far as a place for the Senior Center. Yes, once the conditions are met for the building down there, we have room to do the Senior Center if, and only if, the school discharges them and does not want them in the school any longer. We would have room for their weekly or bi-weekly, whatever it might be, meetings or get-togethers. There will be room, but our original requirements from the state were originally, if I recall, five years before anybody can go inside. But we can prepare our meals and deliver them. And as far as the ADRC is concerned, we're just in negotiations with them, they have a contract to prepare their food over in Ellsworth. And that was another thing that the paper put out, that we were going to do the Meals on Wheels program. Well, somebody else is preparing those meals, their volunteers are bringing them to Prescott, Prescott transfers them into the local volunteers, and they get out to the local people. The local people are not happy, they, right now, are doing like 13 families in town when half a Prescott could qualify for it, you know, and they would like to have good, hot meals. I presented this grant request to the Hunger Task Force out of Milwaukee. I got a 2022 Transit Ford delivery van. We've done wonders down there, and we're set to take care of Prescott, you know. I don't know what to say, I don't write the newspaper, what goes in the newspaper is, you know, somebody else is doing. And it's unfortunate if some people get the wrong idea, and, you know. Is there a question other than what I've just tried to clarify?
No.
No?
Thank you very much, Pete.
You bet.
And Carmen, oh, Carmen has another question.
Carmen. Just a couple things.
You have to come up to the podium.
When we talked to the ADRC.
Yes.
When we talked to ADRC, they have not been contacted yet.
They have been contacted, I'm in negotiations with Heather Conway, her name is Heather.
This was a year ago.
Yes.
This was a year ago.
Carmen, you have to come to the mic.
Okay.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
You know, that's, you know, hearsay, hearsay.
Well, and that's pretty much what's floating around out there, that there's maybe misinformation, I'm not sure, but this is what I'm coming with. The fact that when, when we talked to ADRC, because they're involved in our senior program at the school too, and they said, no, they had not been contacted at that time, but I will say that that's about close to a year ago that that conversation went on. I think that's maybe the biggest piece of it. And in an earlier conversation with Pete, we met up for a brief conversation, and I think Pete even had some bad information that had been passed on to you, that the Senior Center at the school was being closed down and would not be providing support for the seniors. So there is misinformation, this is a good time to have a meeting, I'm sure there aren't more people here to clarify things. And it's a little bit late in the program, because things seem to be moving ahead, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other public comments? Okay, so then, do we cover eligible CDBG activities?
Okay, so eligible CDBG activities include housing, which is roofing, siding, windows, furnace, insulation, down payment, and handicap accessibility improvements. Planning eligible activities include comprehensive plan, community development plans, and neighborhood plans. Public facility include improvements, repairs, or expansions of streets, drainage system, water and sewer, sidewalks, and community centers. Economic development eligible activities include business loans to expand facilities or purchase equipment, specialized employee training. Public facilities for economic development include public infrastructure projects that support business expansion or retention. And then identification of any community development needs by the public. If you feel there's a potential CDBG project that the city would like to pursue or discuss, please contact the planning team at Cedar Corp., and we would be happy to discuss it.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions at this time for that? Okay. Do we have anything else? Well, we have the public hearing over. All right, any motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Thank you, everybody, for the discussion. Okay, next item on the agenda is reports of standing committees. Finance Committee Budget Meeting Wednesday, October 5th at 4:30. So, plan on staying a little while, hopefully we'll get through all of it, it usually goes really well. We don't go line-by-line item, but we do cover everybody's, everybody gets their 15 minutes of fame to present their budget. So, and Public Works, next meeting is Monday, October 24th at 5:00. And the Planning Commission, Resolution 29-22, approving a certified survey map consolidating plot 5 and 6 in COP and Maxon's first edition. So if you look at your, at the map provided there, just combining the two plots so that they have enough square footage to put in a duplex. There were two single-family dwellings, it'd be fine, but neither one of them had enough square footage to support a duplex. That is the reason for the consolidation. Is that correct, Matt?
Correct, ma'am.
So, I look for a motion to approve the resolution?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 29-22.
Second?
Okay, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, thank you, motion carried. All right. Next item on the agenda is approve Cedar Corp. proposal to amend the City of Prescott Comprehensive Plan. Greg, you want to take that, please?
Sure. So this is a proposal to, yeah, amend the comprehensive plan, this was largely driven out of the Planning Commission's discussion with the East Corridor and with the current trend in how things are developing out there, it was kind of a revision to that based on some of the planning work that has been done. So with that, this would be the documents and the process to amend that plan to, and we've already looked at some, a new, more feasible route based on some of the changes of the DOT's position from back in 2005 to where we are now. And it's, it goes through the process and the documents, the meetings to do that, and then also record the plan with the various agencies, you know, near the end there. And I believe that was for a fee of $2,500. So, our planning group, Josh Miller, our senior planner, is very familiar with this, he put that together, I'm here speaking a little more on his behalf, but he has detailed out that scope of work and the process that that would go through, so. I guess we do have questions, I can possibly field those, though.
Does anyone have any questions?
I just, so it will, is this for the high school? Where's the high school? On the moon, man. Oh, there it is, okay. Okay.
So basically, with the route, what we were looking for was a corridor that did not have the challenges of these big vertical crossings of the ravines.
Right.
And we did have another discussion with the current DOT planning group, they certainly have a different position on supporting, say, a Highway 35 bypass. In their eyes, it just doesn't make any sense that they could, that they would do something like that, based on traffic counts, the greater distance, the fact that most of that traffic is going across the bridge, across the river, all of those kind of things are more, the viewpoint that the DOT has now on that.
Okay. So. So, it's probably not likely that we would have a bypass then eventually, unless we, like, expand it dramatically in population?
That's really what it appears from our last conversation with the DOT, Matt was there too, but I mean, if I can accurately reiterate that, that, yeah, the, based on traffic counts, and I think some of it too, is having seen 15 years or whatever, or more, I guess more than that slightly, of growth, or maybe, maybe there hasn't been that much growth that has spurred what they thought would have been a, a planning tool back in 2005, when that was done. So, obviously, a lot of this bears, and the need is really driven by some of the subdivision planning that's going on there. So we had to try to incorporate this from the comp plan from back then, and we looked at it, looked at the challenges of a thousand-foot-long bridge, that's very tall, to cross parts of those ravines, and it just didn't, it just seemed very, very costly, incredibly costly, for what we feel could be a better route, that's more in tune with a phased development approach, that's a little more tangible.
If you look at the sheet that they provided on the breakdown of cost.
Yeah.
It's like a, you know, fraction of the cost of what it would be to put that bridge in. And it appears that it's a good route, and the Planning Commission approved the proposal by vote of 5 to 0. So, it looks like a good comprehensive plan.
And the route is more of a route in concept, you know, this thing could move several hundred feet or more this way or that way, but it's generally following that, that location, you know, generally, to try to achieve something that's more feasible than the challenges we had with that previous corridor. So I don't want people to get too fixated on it, this, its exact location, but in general, that's the, that's, would be the, the area that we would favor. that's the, that would be the area that we would favor. With planning, looking at subdivisions in the future, we can try to piece the requirements together so we have a contiguous right-of-way-through-there eventually for the city is really the goal.
Any other questions?
It seems to me that the DOT's position on this is somewhat of a chicken-and-egg situation. They're not going to respond until there's a population there that warrants it. And right now, the planning is being done for a subdivision that will put the population there, if you hear what I'm saying. So it's, I personally agree with what you came up with. It's a much more cost-effective route to get traffic to the north and to 29.
Sure.
And to 10, and take some of that pressure off. Otherwise, Hollister will become a freeway.
Correct, yeah.
And this is, it's going to be controversial. There's going to be a lot of trouble with various folks that are going to be affected by this. And I'm sure the conversation will be robust and active. But moving forward, as a city position changing this, I think is a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
To Tom's point, that's kind of where I was thinking myself, that the state's never, doesn't ever seem to be proactive in getting out in front of something. Correct me if I'm wrong here, I think we're looking at, right now, under plan, 100, I would say like 110 new homes are already slated but not built to go into this with no other access other than through town. And the idea that we're looking at whatever the traffic of 100 other new homes creates, yeah, that's going to be, it's going to be a burden on the infrastructure that we have and the homes and the residences that are there without giving them an outlet out the other side, you know, of any way. That being said, sadly, I agree to, we evidently don't have much choice. The state's not going to help us along with anything along those lines. But I think that's where, if we can, some of our emphasis and focus needs to be, is encouraging the state and making sure and regularly contacting them and getting the citizens to help us contact them and do everything that we can to let them know that that egg is laid and the chicken is sitting on it. And if they're just going to wait for it to hatch or whatever else, it's going to need to be done. If we do it, the sooner it gets done, the cheaper it'll be, because nothing ever gets cheaper as it goes. Again, we're kind of in a bad spot. There's not a lot we can do about it right now, which is very frustrating, knowing that when there's money sitting in Madison of all kinds, that we could get something like this that would need to be done, done. That's it, thank you.
Anybody else have any comment? Okay, so then, we have a confirmation of client requests for services between Cedar Corp. and the city of Prescott to work with staff, and it will be completed with a lump sum not to exceed the amount of $2,500. So I need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, to approve the confirmation of client requests for services between Cedar Corp. and the city of Prescott. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, everybody.
Pretty much covered the commission report. The next meeting for the Planning Commission would be Tuesday, October 3rd at 6:00. Parks and Public Property, next meeting, Monday, September, well, that's already flown.
No.
No.
No, it's coming up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm ahead of myself. September 19th at 5:00. Nothing for license. Ordnance, next meeting, Monday, September 26th at 5:00. Nothing for health and safety. Personnel, next meeting, Wednesday, November 2nd at 5:00. Next item is communication and new business. Public comments, city council will receive public comments on any issue not related to the agenda. Limited discussion by the council may take place, however, no action will be taken on any item. Anybody have any public comment? Anybody on the council? All right, hearing none. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 30-22, awarding the bid for the food pantry, senior prep kitchen, COVID-19 testing location to Market &amp; Johnson, an amount of $1,208,340. Go ahead.
Quick summary on that, okay. As I had mentioned in some of that first discussion, it was rebid. Department of Administration did, limited to the original bidders. And we did have two bidders. Market &amp; Johnson, as you've mentioned, Mayor, was $1,208,340. Ebert Construction was a fairly, fairly close second at $1,237,000. So we feel that those are pretty tight numbers, you know? We don't see a lot of, I mean, they're very tight. As we had mentioned in some of the discussion with that additional $200,000, that is the increase in, you know, what the original estimates were, but it is the, it is just reflective of those costs that we're up against right now with, in the building industries as things have increased. But we do feel that it's a representative bid in our current environment, and based on the two numbers, we feel that they are, that is what the industry is showing us, that we have two bidders that are that close. So our recommendation would be to award to Market &amp; Johnson for the low-bid amount.
Okay, so the Resolution 30-22 is the resolution awarding the bid for the food pantries in your prep kitchen, COVID-19 testing location to Market &amp; Johnson, an amount of $1,208,340. Not going to read the whole resolution. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion that Resolution 30-22.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Resolution 30-22. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I have one, just one question. Have we worked with the company, yeah, previously?
I'm not aware they are a building contractor, so I'm not sure if they had done work maybe on the city hall in the past. I don't have any, we haven't done a lot of public buildings, you know, in Prescott in a while, so I'm not sure. They are a very reputable company, though. They are, we've, they are, they have a very good presence in this western Wisconsin area. So we feel that they're a very capable company.
Thanks.
They're doing the new library in Ellsworth.
Oh, okay.
I've worked with them on a few CDBG projects as well.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Now I'll call for a roll call. Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dar?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, thank you. Next item on the agenda is closed session.
Motion to go into closed session. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 We're in closed session.